If everybody would take a seat, we'll go ahead and get started. I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacker as Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw Planning Director, Eric England Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter Current Planning Manager, PJ Butler City Planner, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Debbie Hightower is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table right down here in front of us. You're welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover approval, have already been heard or perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you're representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cellphones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room, and we have no changes to the consent agenda, so I'm going to get started with the reading of the consent cases. Again, if you want a consent case removed, just stand up and say so. Agenda item number four, case C-3-22-158. It is on for layover. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of disposition of city-owned property under community development law. This was laid over from our June meeting. Location: 2230, 2216, 2212, 2210, 2208, and 2204 Ohio Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number five, case C-3-22-160. It is on for approval. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of disposition of city-owned property under community development law. This was also laid over from our June meeting. Location: 2238 Ohio Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C-12-22-172. Applicant: Scott Masbach, President, Indian Point Homeowners Association, Incorporated, is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat and final plat approval of Indian Point replat for a minor plat outside city limits. Location: Southeast of 189th Street and George Miller Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 11, case C-10-22-182, C-10-22-183, C-12-22-184. Applicant: Denise Gehringer, Sheltering Tree, Incorporated. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Purple Mountain Hill, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R6, along with the expansion of the major commercial corridor overlay district for a portion of the site. Location: Northwest of 180th Street and Purple Mountain Parkway. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, sir, that will be removed. Agenda item number 11. Now, sir, that was on for layover. Are you aware? You heard me say that? Okay, all right. Agenda item number 12, case C-10-22-185, C-12-22-186. Applicant: Gutsall Property Management. It is on for approval. Request: Preliminary plat and final plat approval of Signal Hill replat to a subdivision inside city limits with approval of the major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: Southwest of 120th and Al Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-10-22-174. Applicant: Robert Seymour, Duck Investments LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R435 to R5. Location: 5256 and 5252 South 16th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-10-22-175, C-10-72-322. Applicant: Michael Hoover. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R2 and R7 to LC with repeal of the PK Parking Overlay District for a portion of the site. Property is located within a major commercial corridor overlay district. Location: 7340 and 7348 Blondo Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C-10-22-176. Applicant: Mike Hager, Hager Construction, Inc. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from HI to R7. Property is located within a neighborhood conservation enhancement overlay district. Location: 718 Pierce Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 16, case C-10-22-177. Applicant: Joseph F. Sanic, AIA. Request, I'm sorry, it's on for approval. Request: Rezoning from R7 to CC to R7. Location: Northwest of 20th and N Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case C-10-22-188. Applicant: Miguel Santa Cruz, USA Builders LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from DR to R4. Location: 5904 N Street and 5912 N Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-10-22-191. Applicant: Robert Green. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI to R5. Location: 1319 South 21st Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-96-45. Applicant: John Dossler, HIAV. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of major amendment to the mixed-use development agreement for Huntington Park. Location: 3410 North 156th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 20, case C-10-22-181. Applicant: Sean M. Reagan. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GI to NBD. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 2234 South 13th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C-10-22-190. Applicant: Rich Burton, Arrow Architecture. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 1113 North 72nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 22, case C-10-22-192. Applicant: City of Omaha. Is on for approval. Request: Approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 2506 and 2510 North 24th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 23, case C-11-22-180. Applicant: Talented 10th Group, Inc. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location: 3324 North 16th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda item number 24, case C-8-22-179. Applicant: Jeff McGregor, McGregor Interests. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow construction, sales, and service in the CC District. Location: 19251 Grant Avenue, Suite 100. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 25, case C-10-21-149, C-8-21-150, C-8-21-158. Applicant: Nebraska HBPA. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the presumed special use permit pursuant to Section 5584Q to allow indoor entertainment and outdoor entertainment in the GI District with approval of a major amendment to the presumed large project special use permit pursuant to Section 55884Q and approval of the MCC Overlay District. Property is located within the Flood Fringe and Floodway Overlay Districts. Location: 6303 Q Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 27, case C-7-22-173. Applicant: St. Philip, Nearie Blessed Sacrament Catholic Parish. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to Section 55883Q to allow religious assembly in the R3 District. Location: 8200 North 30th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? You do? Okay. We'll remove. Agenda item number 27. Agenda item number 28, case C-7-22-178. Applicant: Alex Hale, Chips Performance Training. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC District. Location: 19251 Grant Avenue. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Finally, case number 29, case C-7-22-187. Applicant: Gutsall Property Management. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow auto repair sales in the CC District. Location: Southwest of 120th and Al Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. From the Board, do we have a motion for the consent cases that are on for approval?
I motion to approve Agenda Items Number 5, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 28, and 29.
Second. We have a motion and second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
Do we have a motion for the consent items on for layover?
Motion to layover, case number four.
We have a motion and second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
If you were here for one of those cases that were on consent, there'll be no further action taken today. You are welcome to stay, or you are welcome to leave. It's your choice. Thanks for coming down. The first two cases are administrative only. There'll be no opportunity for public testimony. I'll get started with Agenda Item Number One, case C-10-16-211, C-12-16-212. Applicant: Landohaw Pacific Industries. Request: Final plat approval of Blue Sage Creek III, formerly Whisper Ridge, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4. Location: Northeast of 222nd and F Streets. Eric.
Yeah, so this is the final plat approval, Blue Sage Creek III, which was formerly known as Whisper Ridge when the preliminary plat was approved by City Council in 2016. This is the third phase of the development, although with a new name. So, the lots, 172 single-family residential lots and three outlots. The conditions of approval of the preliminary plat have been met. A few items to point out, there'll be a few items to coordinate with city staff on in the final subdivision agreement regarding memorandum of understanding for acreage lots in the western portion of the site, as well as shared access to those same lots. There are a few new items that have come up in the staff review just because it was several years since the preliminary plat came forward, but that's why there are a few conditions that need to be met before proceeding to City Council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and approval of the final plat subject to addressing the five conditions in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from AG to R4 and approval of the final plat subject to addressing the five conditions outlined in the recommendation report prior to forwarding the request on to City Council.
Second. We have a motion and second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
Agenda item number two, case C-10-8-220, C-12-8-221. Applicant: BHI Development, Inc. Request: Final plat approval of Kensington Park Lots 3 through 15, Outlots A through C, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and MU. This was laid over from our April meeting. Location: Northwest of 204th and Q Streets. Eric.
Yeah, so this final plat includes 13 lots and three outlots. 12 of those 13 lots will be zoned mixed-use, and Lot 3, which is in the northwest portion of the site, will be zoned R6. It had been previously laid over primarily for inspection of that Lot 3 and further wetlands analysis, which did come back without any jurisdictional wetlands, so that can be platted in its current configuration. There are a few mixed-use items that have been addressed from the layover and a few just small items that will be covered before proceeding to City Council. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and MU subject to submission of an acceptable final mixed-use development plan prior to City Council and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of revised preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the rezoning from AG to DR, R6, and MU subject to submission of an acceptable final mixed-use development plan prior to forwarding this request to the Council. Approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of revised preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
That ends the administrative portion of the meeting. We'll move on to the public hearing. Agenda item number three, case C-3-22-144. Applicant: Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. Request: Approval of amendment to Chapter 55 regarding floodplain regulations and exemptions of maximum permitted sound. This was laid over from our June meeting. Location: City of Omaha in the three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. And Eric, you're up again.
Yeah, so this Chapter 55 zoning code text amendment covers several items, the largest being advertised for the floodplain development regulations. However, that code change is not a part of this recommendation report as it needs to be laid over to a future time, so that content is not in your recommendation report. We're still working with our state and regional partners to make sure that Omaha remains in good standing with the National Flood Insurance Program before we proceed with those potential code changes. Before you, the text changes that will go through with your support are mostly editorial for three of the sections and then a slight change on the fourth, so I'll just briefly touch on those. For the NCE and MCC sections, there are some inaccurately referenced sections of the code, so that this change would correct those. Additionally, the amendment clarifies 15 feet of perimeter landscaping applying to all properties within urban design districts adjacent to an arterial street. This is not a new requirement, but it's a clarification of the language as there was some words that we thought could be cleaned up to read more properly. And then the fourth item is actually a new section or a small addition that would add an exemption to the maximum permitted sound created by emergency generator engines during routine maintenance events or periods of partial or total loss of electrical power. There's already a section for sound exemptions. This is just one new small item being added to that. So I'll leave it at that. If there's any questions or following up on the public hearing.
Okay, do we have any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, do we have any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the Board?
Obviously, staff recommends approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
We're going to take Agenda Items Number 6, 7, and 9 together. Agenda item number 6, case C-11-22-129, C-7-22-149. Applicant: Todd Lieberman, Brenshaw Development. Request: Approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC District. This was laid over from our May meeting. Location: Northeast of 30th Street and Spencer Street. Agenda item number 7, case C-11-22-141. Applicant: Todd Lieberman, Brenshaw Development. Request: Approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district. This was also laid over from our May meeting. Location: Northeast of 30th Street and Spencer Street. And Agenda Item Number 9, case C-10-22-126, C-10-22-127, C-12-22-128. Applicant: Todd Lieberman, Brenshaw Development. Request: Preliminary plat and final plat approval of Kennedy Square East, a subdivision inside city limits with rezoning from R5, R7, and CC to R5, R7, and CC, along with approval of the ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: Northeast of 30th Street and Spencer Street. Do we have?
And I'm going to recuse myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let the record show that Sidney Franklin has recused herself, and she is leaving the chambers. Thank you, Sidney.
Thank you.
And the applicant, or Brian, who's presenting?
Hi, my name is Terry Morrison with Airheart Griffin &amp; Associates at 3552 Farnham Street. I'm here on behalf of the owner, along with Brian Hanson of Omaha Housing Authority. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the Board? Eric.
Yeah, we talked about this quite a bit in the pre-meeting, and you're familiar with this site. We did, Planning Board did recommend approval of the preliminary plat back in May. There was a slight change in the plating configuration with the extension of 29th Street to the north from Lothrup to Bristol Street, so that's why the preliminary plat has come back before you. Just a brief summary, because this is a really great project for the City of Omaha and would like to highlight it. City of Omaha and our partners, this is kind of the next phase of the Highlander project, which is located further south. This is the site of former Spencer Homes, and we'll replace that housing with updated mixed-income level housing. So, there will be a mixed-use building along 30th Street, which provides 51 multifamily residential units, as well as retail space in a community center. And then located further to the east, there will be 51 mix of residential units of single-family, attached housing duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. There are two separate PURs that accompany this, so we will have to vote on the cases separately, but we have worked with our multiple partners on this, and we are excited and glad that this is the next step moving forward. So specifically for Agenda Item Number 9, if you have any questions, we can definitely follow up. We'll take number nine first, which is the plat and the rezoning. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from R5, R7, and CC to R5, R7, and CC. Approval of the ACI Overlay District. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report and approval of the final plat subject to conditions of preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to City Council.
Any additional comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
I motion to approve the rezoning from R5, R7, and CC to R5, R7, and CC. Approval of the Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report and approval of the final plat subject to the conditions of preliminary plat approval and submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 6-0.
Okay. For Agenda Item Number 6, this is the PUR and a conditional use permit for the portion of the project fronting 30th Street. Staff recommends approval of the PUR overlay district subject to submitting acceptable final PUR development plans prior to City Council and approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in the CC District subject to the four conditions in the report.
Any comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district, excuse me, subject to submitting acceptable final PUR development plans prior to forwarding the request to City Council. Approval of the conditional use permit to allow multiple family residential in the CC District subject to the four conditions of the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 6-0.
For Agenda Item Number 7, staff recommends approval of the PUR For Agenda Item Number Seven, staff recommends approval of the PUR Overlay District, subject to submitting acceptable final PUR plans prior to forwarding to City Council.
Any comments or questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the PUR Planned Unit Redevelopment Overlay District, subject to submitting acceptable final PUR development plans prior to forwarding the request to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 6-0.
Okay, continuing on, Agenda Item Number Eight. Oh. Let the record show that Sidney Franklin has re-entered the chambers during the meeting. Agenda Item Number Eight, case C3-22-193. Applicant, Planning Department, on behalf of the City of Omaha, requests approval of the Exarban Senior Living Phase III TIF redevelopment project plan. Location, 1510 South 70th Street. And Don, you're presenting?
Yes. Afternoon, Don Saden, Omaha City Planning. The Exarban Senior Living Project, TIF Project Plan, is a Phase III project located at 72nd and Pine, roughly. The yellow area is the development site. The buildings to the north of it are the existing two phases, so we're adding on to an existing senior living facility. The proposal is for a three-story multifamily structure with 49 units. It'll be licensed for assisted living, quite likely it'll be used as an independent living senior unit. It's being developed by LFS/AK Phase III LLC, which is managed by Chaz DeVetter. Total project investment in this area is $12,936,000. The request for the TIF support is $1 million.
That microphone, it's not working. Ronald, is that mic not working?
We're down to one. Can you hear me, though?
Yeah, it's, I was hoping we could hear you a little better, but...
Okay, I'll try to talk more directly into it. Sorry. Okay, the total project investment for this senior living facility with 49 units is $12, 936,000. The request is for $1,108,000 in TIF program support. Let me show you some pictures. Here's the, some pictures of the existing facilities, which we're going to add on to and basically use a compatible, similar design. Some flat elevations as well. The project meets the required criteria of the city's TIF program. It's an appropriate land use for the location, complies with the goals of the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you, Don. Any other proponents?
Michael C. Carter, on behalf of Exarban Village Senior Living, just here to answer any questions that anybody may have about the project.
Need your address, please.
11506 Nicholas, Suite 200, 68154.
Thank you.
Michael, one question before you sit down there. So, just looking, we talked about this a little bit upstairs, opportunity funds, listed as a source of funds in here. Can you explain to me, what that consists of? Are those grants?
You mean the original source, or what the...
Yeah, what's the source of the opportunity?
They, principals of the organization sold a piece of property in council blocks approximately about a year ago, and they put the money in the opportunity zone, hoping to use it for this project.
So it's like a 1031 exchange?
Yes, except for choosing, because not all the partners did a 1031 at that time, that you could take your limited partnership with the opportunity fund that was part of, I don't know all the details on exactly how it's used, but it's a program that was created roughly to put money into areas that the state has designated as an opportunity, and this is one of the areas that the City of Omaha designated as an opportunity-zoned area.
It is, okay.
So it's similar to a 1031, except for it was set up so you could do it with not just land, but other type of financial instruments that you sell, and in this case, some of the partners wanted the money and some wanted to reinvest, and this was a way to handle that situation.
So I understand, they had to reinvest the money that was used from the sale of the property into an opportunity-zone project.
Yes, yes.
Okay, interesting. I've not heard that before. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so you saw the platting of this property last month before the board, and there will also be a minor amendment to the mixed-use development agreement. Staff recommends approval.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approve 7-0.
Moving on, Agenda Item Number 11. It was on consent for layover. It was taken off. It's case C10-22-182, C10-22-183, C12-22-184. Applicant Denise Garringer, Sheltering Tree Incorporated, requests preliminary plat approval of Purple Mountain Martin Hill, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R6, along with expansion of the major commercial corridor overlay district for a portion of the site. Location, northwest of 180th Street and Purple Martin Parkway. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon. I've got some slides for you.
We need your name and address, please.
Certainly.
Okay.
My name is Denise Garringer. I'm the Executive Director at Sheltering Tree. My address is 406 Black Forest Drive in Papillion, Nebraska, 68133. Good?
Yep.
All righty, thank you. I'm going to share just a few minutes about what we do at Sheltering Tree. This is a new concept, and it is a new idea that is actually expanding across the country. There are currently 18 organizations similar to what we do, and you'll see them cropping up as we look to solve the gap in affordable housing for adults with developmental disabilities that exist currently. Sheltering Tree, we are a nonprofit organization. We have a significant growing crisis for adults with developmental disability in regards to housing. We are dedicated to serving those individuals in the Omaha metro area, and our housing model empowers those with developmental disabilities to live self-directed lives and be engaged in their community. With me today is my Board President, Jill Rotella, who is also a resident of Elkhorn, where we are here today to visit with you a little bit more about, as well as John Keel, a board member, and John Coolidge, who is with Lamprey Nielsen, who will share some of the logistical pieces with you. What we do is we provide consumer-controlled apartment living. So these are full-market value apartments, and it includes some staff-monitored safety and security for adults with developmental disabilities. Each tenant has their own rent-subsidized apartment, and it does include the full apartment, full kitchen, bathroom. All areas are, all of our apartments are designed to age in place, so our residents who typically are very routine folks don't have to move along and go to somewhere else to live as they require a little more assistance medically. Significant need is present right now, and it's only going to grow. As you can see with some of this information provided by the University of Minnesota's USED program, across the country, 83% of adults with developmental disabilities do not have a secured place to live. It's a significant number. They are living with aging parents and family members, and we're going to have quite a crisis on our hands soon. In the state of Nebraska, for residential services, the waiting list is approximately seven years, and there are currently around 3,000 people with developmental disabilities waiting for those services, so it's a significant issue. Sheltering Tree, we currently have a waiting list of 190-plus individuals, and those numbers continue to grow. Just a little bit about what's fueling this need. Thirty years ago, when the American with Disabilities Act was passed, we are educating our folks with developmental disabilities to their full potential, and so they are leaving the school systems, and they are prepared to work part-time jobs, they are prepared to have adequate social skills and other skills to live in their communities, and are living in their communities, in apartment communities and other areas. Unfortunately, they need a few more supports and services in order to help them to achieve success living in the community. And just a little bit here about why what we do is so successful. If you look at Maslove's hierarchy of needs, we provide those basic foundational needs, the food, water, warmth, rest, the security, and the sense of belongingness, which is why most all of our residents are very happy and very pleased with where they are living, because they are able to achieve that self-fulfillment and have a happy and fulfilled life. Life. A little bit about how this came about in our area. Shirley McNally and her family, parents of adults with Down Syndrome, wanted to find a place for him to live where he could continue to do what he loves to do, which is make films. He loves to make films, and they, along with a group of concerned parents, formed the organization, and Shirley had a background with HUD, and her husband was a real estate attorney. So they were able to come up with an innovative way to find a way for adults with developmental disabilities who have limited income to afford to live in a safe and clean environment. We currently have two locations successfully operating in the Omaha metro area. Our first location is in Bellevue, straight across the street from Stella's, if any of you are hamburger lovers, and we have been there for almost eight years. Our second location is on the outskirts of Marion's campus on 72nd and Ames Circle. The first location has 10 units and one live-in tenant assistant, and our second location in the Benson area, right on Marion's campus, has 22 units with two live-in tenant assistants. We've successfully operated those, both of those locations, and are growing because the need is growing. What we do is provide consumer-controlled apartments for adults with developmental disabilities that have amenities that are attractive or helpful to those with developmental disabilities. Those amenities include controlled access entry, live-work-play community rooms, onsite laundry, activity director, community-to-life activity calendar, meal plans, accessible design, pedestrian-oriented locations, security cameras, health and wellness, space and activities, life skills training programs, therapeutic gardening, tenant assistants that live onsite, and we use a Life Loop communication system to communicate with families and guardians that support our friends. In order to qualify to live at a Sheltering Tree, you must be an adult with a developmental disability, and we use funding specific for our folks so that we can build an apartment community that provides the amenities that they need to live successfully in the community. Non-qualifying characteristics are equally as important. Persons with a leading diagnosis, high-risk mental illness, or anyone with aggressive, violent, or deviant behaviors to themselves or others, whether they are verbal, sexual, threatening or intimidating, do not qualify for Sheltering Tree, because we don't provide the types of supports that they need in order to be successful. We don't provide med supports, we don't provide behavioral supports, we don't have any of those types of supports, because that's not the model that we have within our community, and so those folks aren't able to live in our particular type of housing because those supports are not available for them. We have four main values: safety, affordability, community, and self-determination. Safety is the priority in all that we do. All of the residents living at Sheltering Tree are adults with developmental disabilities and have vulnerabilities, so of course, we are looking to make sure that they live safely in their apartments and in their community. The building is secure. Tenants and their parent guardians have access keys to the building. All who have access keys are background-checked and screened, so that we are aware of any history that we should be concerned about. Affordability is a huge issue for adults with developmental disabilities. Although many of our friends do work part-time jobs, most all of them live on their 841's SSI disbursement. Obviously, it's difficult to find an apartment with a rent that is less than 841. Let's say you find one that's 841, then do you have funds to buy food or clothing or any other life needs? So each of our tenants do participate in a subsidized housing program, which allows them to pay one-third of their personal income for their rent and utilities, making it affordable. It also gives them the opportunity, then, to choose how they spend the remaining piece of their earned income or their SSI. In some cases, where you have group homes or other types of living situations, supported living for adults with developmental disabilities, they turn their whole social security check over to the supporting agency, and they're not able to make as many decisions on their own. And when you have agency over your life, you are a happier person, and so it's very important, it's a very important piece to what we do. Community is very important. So many of our friends with developmental disabilities really do fall off the cliff when they leave their high school community, and so this type of community gives them an opportunity to belong and to be part of a community, and to have people nearby with them, nearby them who can share in similar likes and dislikes. We do have, Sharon dislikes? I'm not sure where that came from. We do have a very vibrant activity program. It is led by an activity director, so we offer activities both on location and then out in the wider community. And then last, but not least, is self-determination. We feel it's very important for our friends to be able to control their own lives and make choices for their futures. I love to use this picture with this slide, because this friend decorated his own apartment, and as you can see, it is very individual to his taste. Current projects under construction, we are building a $13.5 million building in the Shadow Lake area in the Papillion. It is our biggest community yet. We have two 24-unit apartments, which is identical, the apartment buildings are identical to the 24-unit building that we have on Marion's campus on 72nd and Ames. We are located at 72nd and Ponderosa Drive. We are putting footings down this week, and so we are well underway there. But most importantly, it will offer 44 adults with developmental disabilities a chance to live in self-determined lives in their own apartments. We will not ever build more than two buildings on one area. We think that it's important to not create a village where those people live. We want people to be integrated in their community. We want them to have opportunities to have a life that is fully, fully integrated in both employment and grocery stores, where what, you know, anything that they do should be included in the community. Our future project, the Elkhorn Sheltering Tree, that we're here to talk to you about today, we are building on 20 acres of land that was gifted to us by the Roy Johnson Trust, Family Trust. We are thrilled to build the apartments in this area to serve the citizens of the Elkhorn area. Most all of our tenants choose to live in the areas where they grew up. They choose to live where their high schools are, where their churches are, where their families are, and so we see those waiting for opportunity to live in Elkhorn, a significant number of Elkhorn individuals that have developmental disabilities. This is a rendering of the beautiful location that we'll be building. There'll be two buildings exactly alike right across the drive from each other. This is exactly the same of our Benson area location. We have some wonderful partnerships with garden clubs. Currently, we have partnership with the Loveland Garden Club, as well as emerging partnership with the Papillion Garden Club, and the garden clubs, in addition to the management company maintaining our properties, come and have added value with their garden expertise. This is the property here. This R6 is what we're hoping to achieve with you. This is the area that we will be building the two buildings on. The remaining piece of land is set, hopefully will be developed later, once we've had an opportunity to visit with a neighborhood, see what they are looking for, what they'd like to see in their community. We have limited use with our, limited opportunity with what we can build there. The gift came with some restrictions, and we do know that anything we build there has to reflect the mission of Sheltering Tree and the individuals that we serve. This is the two buildings laid out on that section that I just pointed out to you. You'll see that there's a lot of landscaping, and you'll see it's set back quite a bit from Purple Martin Parkway, so that we provide an opportunity for it to blend in with the We build our buildings without debt because of federal, state, city grants and major capital funding by donors. So many of the well-known philanthropic organizations in our area have already supported our capital campaigns and our projects, and we also use Lytech opportunities to build with our investors, and so therefore, we do not have any debt on the buildings, and they are financially sustainable. Currently, we use Selden Management Company to manage the properties and do the certification for our residents. We have tenant-assistance support that live onsite on the building. They are there to assist when necessary and to facilitate any kind of community engagement. And most importantly, our residents have the opportunity to be independent but not alone, which is, that's the statement right there that says basically what we do, because so many of our friends, there's a saying in the disability world, that people with developmental disabilities die when they graduate from high school, and then they're buried when they're 75. And pardon me if I get emotional, but it is what happens with our friends. It's a list of our board members, and they are extremely supportive and behind our mission wholeheartedly, and I welcome any questions that you might have for me. I know John's going to provide you some more specific details.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Question, we had, did have a letter come in. Have you had a meeting? Have you had a meeting with the surrounding residents?
We have not. Public meeting. We have not yet. I've spoken with several neighbors. I did ask them if they had a night that they preferred, they were going to get back to me. But since I haven't heard back from them, we do have one scheduled on July 20th at the junior high there at Elkhorn North Ridge Junior High School, which is adjacent to our property.
Okay.
And we will send letters out. Letters, actually, will go out tomorrow to those neighboring residents, yes.
Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome.
Denise, just follow-up question, a couple things there.
Yes, sir.
So you covered it in one of your slides there, but it sounds like your funding is through philanthropy primarily.
We use NIFSA tax credits, as well as funding from philanthropic organizations and foundations in our community.
And how does the, great organizational purpose, by the way.
Thank you.
Really appreciate what you're doing. But how are the operations of the Sheltering Tree then funded on an ongoing basis?
Yes, you bet. So the rent revenue does sustain the operation of the building and the staff that is on-location. Additional administrative costs, we fundraise. So we fundraise through an annual gala and other fundraising opportunities.
Okay. Typical nonprofit type of structure.
It is a tip that we sing for our supper.
Great. Again, a great purpose.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Any other proponents wishing to speak? Denise covered quite a bit of areas. So any new information?
Sure. The engineer doesn't have much to say, right? I guess I'd just like to add a couple items.
Need to have name and address, please.
My name is John Coolidge. I am an engineer with Lamprey Nielsen, here on behalf of the applicant, 14710 West Dodge Road. So as we look at sort of this vicinity map, this is the Father Flanagan, or Flanagan Lake, which is, I think is appropriate, Flanagan Lake. And here's our site, right here, adjacent to that. So, you know, Father Flanagan and his mission, and here we are, right next to it. I want to zoom in to what we're doing today. All right, so. I think I'm upside down here. Here's the new Elkhorn Public School that was recently constructed, that consisted of a junior high, or the junior high, and here's the junior high and elementary school. Here's the Woodbrook Development, and here is our five-acre, basically, development located adjacent to that. So that's where we're trying to get into our project. Again, as you look at our project, you can see that we have a, there's actually an OPPD power line easement that runs between us and the existing Woodbrook Valley. That's a 200-foot easement. So our project is located, you know, 200 feet north of the project. We're adjacent to the Elkhorn School, but obviously, we'll have some buffer yard requirements. But there's just a lot of space associated with this project, in terms of my opinion. As we look at this project, it's approximately a five-acre project. So if you looked at a five-acre project, and you thought three and a half units, or three and a half single-family homes, that's 15 to 20 single-family homes. We're talking about 48 units here. So, you know, if you have 20 single-family homes versus 48 units with individuals living at them, the traffic is certainly not an issue. The number of people living there is not an issue. I just don't think that there's anything that can be said in terms of the number of people that can be lived there. Finally, I just want to talk about why the City of Omaha and the Planning and Public Works Department recommended layover today. And their recommendation for layover, which I guess I'm a little disappointed at, is because our PCSMP submittal was not complete, in their minds. And the PCSMP is that after construction, you can't have more stormwater leaving the site than before. And we have, we've got a lot of room on this site. We've shown two stormwater-quality basins. In addition to that, we submitted like a 50-page report with our PCSMP. So in my opinion, we've got a lot of people here today, and then to lay this over for a month, based upon a PCSMP, is not accurate. So I guess I'd like you guys to consider why the layover has been recommended by the planning department, and then consider that. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have in regards to that.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other proponents?
I just want to show them where my property is. Do you know what I mean? Hello, my name is Barbie Hayes. My address is 6506 North 180th.
About the big one?
I just want to show them where my property is in relation to the...
Let's go with this one.
You're just always so efficient, John.
Barbie, isn't everywhere your property?
Barbie and I have never worked together.
Oh, yeah, get out of here. Okay, so this is the Sheltering Tree site. My property is right here. So I'm adjacent to the north. My address is 6506 North 180th Elkhorn. My family has been on this property since the 1880s. So through generations, we have seen much change in this part of the county. I am the direct neighbor to the Sheltering Tree property with only an old pasture fence between us. My sister and I are the Roy Johnson Family Partnership, and we donated the 20 acres Sheltering Tree is on to them before the pandemic and before the subdivisions. In the interim, they maintained it in cropland. A fair bit of our farm went into the making of Lake Flanagan, not Flanagan Lake. And we felt the Sheltering Tree community would be a wonderful addition to the mixed-use community being planned at that time around the lake. Sheltering Tree communities are well-maintained, they're aesthetically pleasing, and they have a very welcoming atmosphere. If you've never visited one, I encourage you to. I don't think you could ask for a better neighbor, because I couldn't. I am grateful we live in a society where we embrace everyone with equal grace and respect, and where we know that diverse communities represent healthy and prosperous communities. My sister and I saw great value in helping Sheltering Tree advance their vision in the Elkhorn area around Lake Flanagan. And again, I am pleased to have them as my neighbor. We are a proponent. I wanted you to understand the intent of our donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbie. Any other proponents? Seeing none, I'm going to change to opponents. Sir? Yeah, come on down. Give your name and address.
My name is Brad Vipond. I live at 6008 North 182nd Ave, which would be right across the street. I don't know if I would consider myself so much as an opponent of this. I think the proposal, I think the idea is solid and great. I'm a MST therapist with Boystown. I'm not here in any capacity representing Boystown, but I've also worked at Boystown for 20 years. I've dedicated my life to helping at-risk youth and families. Work in the community. I deal with a lot of developmentally-delayed, disabled, mental health disorders, all those kind of things. So I know how to interact, I know the disorders, I know what people need. I think this is a great idea to integrate a community into an existing community. I think it's awesome. The issue that I have is that this has not been presented to anybody in our community. This is the first I've seen of any of this stuff. I have talked to Ms. Geringer before, and we did discuss having a meeting. We've gotten no dates for any set meeting. I've talked to the Elkhorn School Board, because it is very close to a school, and it does cause some concerns for some of our neighbors. I can't be the one presenting this and presenting all the diagnosis and all the kind of stuff to look out for. Part of integrating is educating, right? So for integrating, we also need to educate our neighbors. That ensures the safety of the people that are living there, as well as the people in the community. So that is my only concern, is that safety piece, that everybody is aware of this, and everybody gets this information. Because I think if you gave everybody this information, I think you would get questions, and you would get good questions, to get a lot more support. Because right now, in the neighborhood, all we got was a letter saying, here's the hearing, this is what it is. Conveniently, when we bought those lots, I've been there since October 12th of last year. We had asked celebrity several times, who's going to own that land? They said, well, they told us celebrity owned it, and that was a lie. And then they told other people in our residence that, oh, there's going to be other housing there. So we have other neighbors in the community that bought specific lots that were a lot more expensive, primarily because it was right next to that area. So I know that sounds horrible, but the main issue is that this information has not gotten brought to anybody else. As I think there, in Papillion, I think you guys had a meeting, correct? There was a meeting in Papillion with community? Yeah. And so we haven't gotten that chance yet. So I don't think anybody's opposing it. Yes.
Yeah, you heard Denise say that they're planning a meeting on...
I haven't gotten anything.
On July 20th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going out tomorrow, the notification, and I would suggest you talk to Denise that's here today, after the meeting, or after this, so.
So those are my concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. Any other opponents? Seeing none, I'm sorry.
Hi there, my name is Michelle Sharp. I live right there, directly adjacent to the south side. My address is 6009 North 182nd Avenue. My property is directly lining up with the out parcel A, which is their lot where the drainage is going to be, right in front of the two yellow buildings, if you will. I have the same concerns that he did prior to today, and prior to hearing that there's going to be a meeting, where there was a lot of, we were worried, trying to speculate what was happening. So I had the same issue. But also, when I spoke with this Geringer on the phone, she mentioned that this is a consumer-controlled apartment for adults with disabilities. But in our letters that we received, it was coded as a low-income, affordable housing community. So I asked if this was something that could potentially impact all of our property values, because, as my neighbor mentioned, a lot of us picked lots specifically in these areas, because it was presented to us that this was not going to be, there was going to be no facility there, it was going to be either more homes or whatnot, and a lot of us wanted to be very close to that school. You'll notice that it's very close to a middle school and an elementary school, this proposed location. So that is why a lot of our homes are where they are. So I asked if there was a potential that this would impact property values for our neighborhood. And apparently, with the Papillion location that is going up, a lot of those residents at the meeting had the same concern. And so Sheltering Tree did order an impact study for them, where a team came in and evaluated what the impact would be for those homeowners. But that was not ordered for us, so I did request it. But I would like to request that we be able to receive the results and evaluate them prior to further consideration. Also, we did reach out to the school board to see if they had received notifications, especially since they are actually going to be the closest to the facilities, to see if they had any safety concerns, and see if they approved of this as well. And as of last week, they said that they had received the letter in the mail, but had not yet opened it. They had just received it last week. So everything seemed to move rather expeditiously, and they had not even had time to truly address it yet. And so I would ask that they, their opinions and their concerns be solicited as well before considering proceeding.
Okay. Michelle, I'm going to suggest the same thing that I suggested to Brad. Denise is behind you. After the meeting, if you wanted to talk to Denise, get more information about the meeting and concerns, and where it's going to be held and all that, that would be good. Okay? And don't forget, this wasn't being just pushed through, it was on layover. So it was not going to be decided today. It was going to be laid over, and I'm sure Denise took that into account of having a public meeting with all the neighbors, so.
That would be wonderful, that would help us a lot.
All right, thanks for coming down, Michelle.
Thank you.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, I'm going to close public hearing. Denise, did you want to address anything now from concerns of Brad and Michelle, or do you want to just address those at your public meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly answer questions at the public meeting for the neighbors. What we provided in the Papillion area, just for clarification, was a market study.
I'm sorry, I need your name and address again.
No problem. Denise Geringer, 406 Black Forest Drive, Papillion, Nebraska 68133. I'm the director of Sheltering Tree. Yeah, we provided, we have market studies done for both locations. We had a neighbor in the Papillion area who did the impact study. So I did speak with Michelle about that on the phone. They did an impact study. We did not provide that, but we do have market studies for both locations that we were able to provide as well. But yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions. I've been speaking to neighbors and...
I was just going to give you the opportunity to...
Thank you, thank you.
Just, Michelle, Denise, one follow-up question real quick.
John, just a second, John. I'm sorry, I closed the public hearing. Somebody might want to call you up, but, okay. I called Denise up.
You're a tax-exempt organization, correct?
We are not.
You are not?
We're a nonprofit organization. We are not tax exempt.
Nonprofit, so you will pay taxes on this property?
We will, yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Did anybody need to talk to John? Any additional comments, questions from the board? Eric, would you address John's point about the PCSMP?
Yeah, I might need to call up Public Works, that's more their realm. And, you know, just in the pre-meeting, I know Ryan Haas spoke to that more than I did. So I guess I would propose, Ryan, maybe if you want to come down and give Public Works perspective here, and then I can touch on a few items, too.
Ryan Haas, with the Public Works Department? So you're just looking for more information on the staff recommendations?
Yeah. Well, just, Ryan, I guess concerning the post-construction stormwater management plan, I know you had conversations with the division in your department about that. Could you just touch on that for the record, please?
Yeah, as part of our internal review, we rely on a lot of different staff members in their respective areas of expertise. Over time, there were problems arising with lack of sufficient information upfront with plaid applications. We tried to work with applicants and help move the process along, and then that caused problems repeatedly with getting too far down the line to then make changes at the end of the process. So with that in mind, we kind of drew the line early in 2022 to require certain things upfront. It sounds like maybe there's miscommunication on expectation of the formatting or format of the plans with respect to electronic submittals. Certainly, staff doesn't ever want to recommend layover. I know applicants don't want, no one wants layover recommendations. And so, as I mentioned this morning, if there's something that we can do to maybe shore up or adjust the city code, so it more clearly defines what the expectation is for those upfront submittals, we can certainly do that. But in the meantime, I'm relying on our city staff. Selma, who reviews stormwater management plan, she said that there wasn't enough information in the sufficient or the appropriate format, so that's where the recommendation for layover came from.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan. Any additional comments, questions, Eric?
John, I'll call you up, and you seem to have a differing thought, so I'll give you a chance.
I guess I'd just like to speak to that.
I guess I'd just like to speak to that, you know. John Coolidge, uh, here on behalf of the applicant, Lampard Neerson, one forty seven ten West Dodge Road. And, um, so, you know, the city code talks about, um, you know, five copies of a proposed stormwater management plan must be submitted. We submitted a stormwater management plan. We believe that we've met the requirements and, uh, at, you know, July third, we were informed that we would be delayed. So I, I, we've got a lot of important people that are here out of their job. And so I guess I'd just like to, the, the, the board to consider moving this forward without a delay. I mean, what purpose? Do you think that the public meeting is the important thing?
It's important. From my standpoint, John, we're gonna, yeah.
All right.
We're gonna layover from my standpoint, my opinion.
Not because of the report, but because we, we want interaction within the community and so, so-
And I understand that. And that's an important aspect.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You settled down, John?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. Eric, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, you know, it's so, I mean, obviously you heard in great detail about the project and we think it's, it's a wonderful program. Um, you know, staff does have it on for a layover, um, for our recommendation. And as you just mentioned, it's very consistent with this board to, to have those neighborhood meetings beforehand and, uh, we, we believe that's the appropriate thing to, to occur as well. And, um, you know, we can come back next month and, you know, the August meeting and, and get the correct documentation in the, in the proper format and allow for that neighborhood meeting to happen. And the city's perspective, that would be the, the best case scenario. Um, I know that does cause a one-month delay, but we can work with the applicant to try to speed it up to city council as quickly as we can after, um, you know, it does have to come back in for a final plat. So we can, we can work as hard as we can, um, to try to expedite things on, on our end, um, you know, within reason. So, um, I guess with that being said, staff recommends layover.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion? We have a motion and second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Kate?
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
Okay, moving on. I believe we're at agenda item number twenty-six. Okay, C seven dash fifteen dash one fifty-three, applicant Lord of Life Lutheran Church requests approval of a major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly in the R one district location, two oh eight forty-four Bonanza Boulevard. And may we hear from the applicant, please?
Sure. Joe Kattulak with RDG Planning and Design Architect on behalf of Lord of Life Lutheran.
Did you say Joe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Lord of Life is located at the intersection of two hundred and eighth and Bonanza Boulevard in the Skyline Ranches neighborhood, just south of Dodge Street there. It's the area indicated in the gray, or excuse me, black outline. Lord of Life has been on this property for almost forty years, uh, and has done a number of additions throughout its time, uh, on that property. We are seeking to be able to expand via master planning efforts that we went through with the Lord of Life Church to understand how they might grow, uh, and continue to expand their ministries for the next twenty to thirty years. Uh, part of that master plan included, uh, expansions to uh, an existing worship space, uh, as well as providing an adequately sized fellowship hall and rethinking, uh, an addition that was done in twenty fifteen through twenty seventeen related to, uh, Monday through Friday, uh, daycare facility, rethinking and hopefully providing better spaces for the children that would be existing there. The major building expansions, really the only building expansions, would occur to the north of the existing facility and within the setbacks required for building setbacks. The parking would expand, uh, along some of the same lines that have been currently established, uh, with the parking setbacks. So, uh, there, there's a fifty-foot, um, setback for building along Bonanza here. And we would continue that with the building, however the parking currently encroaches on that. So we would continue some of those lines. So as part of our, um, application, we noted three waivers that we would be seeking as part of this process. One for impervious coverage, an allowance to increase that impervious coverage from thirty percent to, we're, we're sitting, sitting just shy of fifty percent currently with, uh, the full buildout. We would also be seeking, uh, a waiver to allow for the expansion of parking within the front yard setback along, uh, Bonanza there. In addition to that front yard setback, there would also be a waiver sought to shrink our thirty-foot landscape buffer down to twenty-five foot, which is what it exists at today, but we're extending that. So we would need to seek a waiver, uh, there as well. So we'd be seeking three waivers, uh, as part of the process of approval to allow for expansion and Lord of Life to continue to exist on a site that they've occupied for nearly forty years. Thank you.
Joe, uh, just one question, well, one question, Joe. Have you had a meeting with the, with the neighbors, a public meeting?
Sure. So in, yes, so in April, uh, mid-April, there were letters that were sent out, uh, actually before mid-April, we held a, an open house, uh, April seventeenth, I believe, was the date? I think April seventeenth, April twentieth, somewhere in that range. Uh, we had two, uh, members, uh, of the neighborhood show up for that meeting. We, we chatted with them, explained the, the intent and the goals of the, of the master plan and what Lord of Life was seeking to do. We sent that notice to neighbors, uh, along two hundred and eighth and Bonanza. So we strategically sent letters to those folks that we thought might be impacted by Lord of Life's, uh, traffic as, as the, um, as the church looks to expand their seating capacity, uh, on Sundays.
It's kind of an unusual neighborhood where you could get everybody within three hundred feet and still only contact three houses.
Correct, correct. Which is why we, we took that approach in terms of contacting neighbors. We, we figured most people would be coming in, uh, off of Skyline Drive via Bonanza, Bonanza or off of two hundred and fourth, uh, along two hundred and eighth street there.
Did you contact the homeowners association?
We did. We did have conversations with the homeowners association. Um, I can't really speak to how those went. Most of those were held between, uh, Lord of Life and the homeowners association. At one point, there was, uh, potential opportunity to acquire land to the north. Um, however, the, the homeowners association elected to, uh, to purchase that land, um, for their uses. Uh, so that's the, the area here to the north. Um, currently, there's a, there's a jumping, uh, horse, uh, facility to the, to the east as well as a horse trail that follows along the north property line. So they were looking to, to expand their, their uses there. And so, yeah, we've had numerous conversations with the homeowners association and, uh, attempted to have an open house, uh, in April.
Okay. I just want to save something real quick, just for full disclosure. I do live in this neighborhood, Joe, so I just wanted that known. Okay. Any other questions for Joe? Okay, thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
I guess, uh, with me today are pastors Lynn Cool, Pastor Cruz, uh, and Dwight Frost, who's a member of the congregation.
Okay. Are they wishing to give testimony or?
No, they're not.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Joe. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Come forward, give your name and address, please, and-
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Michael Dzinski, nine fifteen South Two Hundred Fifth Street. I am the president of, uh, Skyline Ranches Property Owners Association. I, um, wanted to address the board on the measure today, um, some things that may or may not be known to you, board members. Um, uh, Skyline Ranches was developed sometime around nineteen seventy-one, and the original concept was to have larger properties. We do, we are a horse-related community where we have trail systems throughout the neighborhood that are adjacent to everyone's property. Uh, the picture that, uh, they just showed of the park that's across the street from, from Lord of Life Church, um, is what we call Skyline Corral. Uh, it's a area where there's a lot of horse-related and non-horse-related activities. Um, the original concept of our neighborhood is kind of being defeated by the, the proposed construction of this project, uh, because they're, they're taking away that green space. Um, I'm not so much here saying, not necessarily in my backyard because we already have Lord of Life in our backyard. We also have St. Augustine Church in our backyard, and we also have Skyline Elementary School in our neighborhood. So we, we already have those, those structures and those facilities in place. But there are a few things that I wanted on behalf of the members of our association to share with you. The first one is our traffic issue, specifically on, uh, Rawhide Road and two hundred and eighth street and Bonanza Boulevard, which would be a direct route to Lord of Life Church. Um, several years ago, before the city of Omaha annexed the city of Elkhorn, the sheriff's department did a, a study on the speed on that street on Rawhide Road. I know, I can't speak to whether the people that were issued tickets for speeding were members of our neighborhood or members of persons that were going to the two churches in the school, but several cars were stopped at that time during that study in excess of fifty miles an hour in the neighborhood. Right now, the, the, that practice has been discontinued because the city is more interested in the speed of traffic on two hundred and fourth street. Um, and that kind of goes into my second que- uh, issue is with, uh, safety. So just about two weeks ago, we had a resident's child that was hit by a van on two hundred and eighth street just north of Rawhide Road. The child was on his way to Skyline Corral on his bicycle and, uh, he was going to fish. We have a pond that's in that, in that park that's available to our members and certainly any kid that wants to go fishing. Um, thankfully, he was, he was not injured seriously. He was taken to the hospital for, uh, you know, a routine exam, but, um, the problem that we have with, the other problem that we have with safety is, um, every, every entrance that we have in our neighborhood has a sign that says children and horses have right of way. And in our association's website and our association's emails, we always somewhat address that issue. Um, but I don't know that everybody that goes into our neighborhood knows that. Um, so the, one of the problems that we have with regards to safety in our, in our neighborhood is we don't have sidewalks. We don't have a curb and gutter that cars can't necessarily go over. So people that are choosing to exercise, whether it's riding a bicycle, walking the dog, or even going to a neighbor's house, have to walk on the side of the street. Um, and again, where our streets are only a two-lane street, so they don't have the luxury of getting out of the way if two cars happen to come into the same part of that street while they're walking. Another issue that we had with the streets is, um, in two thousand and eighteen, the city of Omaha City Council made a recommendation that, in their view, our streets were not up to standards as, as the city of Omaha expressed it. So that we, as neighbors in our association, would be responsible for seventy-five percent of the repairs or replacements of those streets. I'm sure that all of you know what it costs to pave a mile of two-lane street anywhere in this city. Um, and that's just a financial burden that our neighborhood just can't support. Um, it would be, it would be significant for each home to have to replace, to come up with the money to replace the streets that we have in here. However, with the traffic of proposed increase in membership of one hundred and fifty patrons to, uh, Lord of Life going to four hundred or more, um, the impact that our streets are going to suffer from the construction, the heavy construction equipment that's going to go on to those streets and the development of that facility. And then the added stress that those people are going to put, those added people are going to put into the neighborhood, uh, in terms of whether it's they're there for a, uh, Sunday worship, whether they're there for the daycare, which is a Monday through Friday, I think, fair, uh, public, public or private parties that are held at the church weddings, uh, you know, I can just go on and on. But the, the use of those streets, those limited number of streets are just going to take a beating. And as we all know, churches don't pay taxes, so they're not going to help us, uh, if we need to replace those. The, the final issue that I wanted to touch base with on is, is property value. Um, the homeowners, the property owners association in our neighborhood has worked very hard to maintain a level of quality in our neighborhood. Um, and I'm not saying that, that churches or the school haven't helped foster that, but unfortunately, one of the things according to real estate agents that I've spoken to on this matter specifically have said that traffic is a major concern when families are looking to relocate. And if, uh, if we go and add an, an additional four hundred or more vehicles up and down already busy street, um, it's certainly going to impact the values of those properties, certainly that are on that street and spread beyond that. Um, you know, the, the assessor's office has always been very kind to make sure that they, they realize that our properties are worth a lot more every year, and this year is no different. But I've never, ever in my years, uh, had the occasion for the assessor to lower the valuations of a, of, of a property in the event that there's a downturn specifically based on the traffic that's going up and down that street. Um, I would, I would also like to share with your board, uh, just, uh, a, a couple of weeks ago, we, we had some events in our neighborhood at Skyline Corral and some of our members started passing out a petition in, in protest of the plans for, uh, Lord of Life's expansion. Um, and I'd like to present that to your board. There's a list here of a little over a hundred people that have signed it. It's a little over a hundred, I believe, on that list of people that are directly opposed to the increase in the size of the building and their plans to go forward. Um, I know that when Lord of Life, I've only been in the neighborhood for about twenty-six years, twenty-six, twenty-seven years, but when Lord of Life originally built their facility, uh, two hundred and eighth street was open to Dodge Street. So they had direct access to Dodge Street, um, as well as St. Augustine Church that's right up the street from them on two hundred and eighth street. But, uh, with the state closing that access, they no longer have that. So the, all of their constituency has to go up the road. So, um, also in closing, I'd like to say that, and I know there are a number of people here that would also like to speak, so, but, uh, the April meeting that they had for the, the neighborhood is a little disingenuous because I get all of our mail for our property owners association because our trail does go in the entire length of their north border. And neither I or the person that lives right next door got the letter to invite them to the meeting. So I have talked to Lord of Life, uh, Dr. Black on several occasions about what their plans were. And all of the plans that I've spoke to Dr. Black about, um, are about giving up our properties to make their property bigger. So there's not a lot of win in it for my, my association or our neighborhood. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Any other opponent?
Any other opponents wishing to speak?
Hi, my name's Jessica Anderson. I'm at 21102 Shiloh Circle in Elkhorn. Um, I'm part of Skyline Ranch's neighborhood, and what, um, things that concern me is I have four kids, and we go to the park at least two or three times, um, every week, and the traffic is a big concern for me. Um, my oldest likes to ride his bike down with his friends, and, um, you know, even then I'm walking behind them. But I've seen cars that aren't paying attention and are not, um, you know, not going the speed that they should be for a neighborhood. And so having that increased by so many is a concern for me and the safety of my kids. Um, and then just also the roads. The roads are horrible, and especially in that little area going off of, um, Bonanza onto 208. Um, it's always have, it always has potholes and everything. And so I'm just concerned that increasing that traffic again is just going to make it continually worse. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Any other opponents?
Good afternoon, board. My name is Mark Novatney, Lamson Dugemary Law Firm, 10306, Regency Parkway Drive here in Omaha. I've been asked by Mike and the homeowners association to talk about the ordinances just for a short time that pertain to, uh, the, uh, Lord of Life Lutheran Church District Conditional Use Permit Request. Uh, I think we have to make sure we are on the same page. I think we're looking at an expansion of the sanctuary from one hundred and fifty to four hundred people capacity, almost a three times capacity. The daycare go from sixty-four, uh, potential, uh, children to a hundred and twelve, uh, not counting staff, uh, almost twice as much. Uh, and in the materials we received, uh, there's nothing showing a, a, a need or a use for that, that the, the population or the use for the, uh, church itself i- is anticipating that type of need. Uh, you're familiar with, uh, Code of Ordinances, 55102, the general purpose ordinance, which of course, at Section F, says that, uh, the ordinances are to try to ensure the adequacy of privacy and open space for the residents. Uh, the homeowners association, association would suggest that this would interfere with both the, uh, privacy and the open space for the residents by expanding this and including more traffic. Section G, of course, uh, the ordinances are to facilitate planning for services for the residences, residents. Uh, this would, of course, uh, interfere with that. And lastly, Section 55102, Section H, the ordinance's purpose is to, uh, for conservation of the established neighborhoods. This would enhance, or not enhance, it would engorge upon the existing neighborhood. Uh, this is our one request for a conditional, conditional, uh, use permit. That's 55123, as you know. Uh, permitted uses include single-family residents. That's what we have here. That's what the homeowners association, association is. Uh, it also provides, Section B, for limited daycare. Uh, is a, a daycare with sixty-four children limited? Uh, that's for your decision. I don't know. It seems like a, a pretty large daycare to me. It also provides for parks and recreation, Section B also, which Mike talked about. Uh, however, Section 55 dash one twenty-four, uh, which is the, uh, ordinance that this is being requested under a conditional use ordinance, uh, although it allows for religi- religious, religious assemblies, it doesn't talk about daycares, for example. That would be a special use permit, uh, 55125, which will allow for a general daycare service. Uh, that would be a hundred and twelve students, uh, uh, ki- children, I don't know. Uh, but it seems to me that if they're asking for a larger, uh, daycare, they're asking for the wrong type of, of, uh, use at this time or permit. Uh, 55126, of course, talks about height requirements. The way I read the study that we did receive, that, uh, the planning department did note that the height of the structure would exceed the thirty-five-foot requirement. And I think the response from, uh, Lord Luther, uh, Life Lutheran Church said that their average height is less than thirty-five feet. But the sta- uh, the statute, the ordinance says it's the maximum. It doesn't say average, it's maximum. And I think that in and of itself, the plan would show that exceeds that use. The impervious coverage, uh, as we heard, is going to go from thirty percent to forty-nine percent. Uh, I didn't see any type of, uh, impact study on, uh, storm drains or runoff. As Mike told you, there are no curbs. There are no, uh, uh, nothing to stop the water from running off the road into the, into the properties. Uh, the three waivers or a yard setback, a lands, uh, uh, escaping and the impervious coverage. Again, I, I've seen nothing in the studies to say there's a, a need or a use or an impact as to those three things. Uh, I'm concerned about the water runoff, um, into the park, which is, uh, from a elevation standpoint, you could see it would go right straight to the park and where the, the, the lake is. The stormwater runoff, there's no traffic capacity studies. Mike told you, these roads are very fragile the way they are without an increase in traffic, let alone the construction traffic. Um, the long operating hours will increase, uh, the, uh, use of those roads, and no sanitary, sanitary, uh, sewer study either. Uh, I guess, uh, what I've been, based on our analysis, we'd like to see this either be laid over for additional work, additional studies, additional, uh, impact studies to see what the water runoff would be, the traffic stays would be, what the road construction would be, or nothing else, uh, we would ask it be denied. Uh, any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Any other opponents wishing to speak?
Well, I am the individual he talked about, Mike spoke about. I'm sorry.
Need your name and address.
Dave Bramel, 20936 Bonanza Boulevard. I am the neighbor that talked about having the postal service. Snail mail slowed me down because I had yet to receive that invite to the original public meeting the church wanted. I own the empty lot beside him, my house just to the west.
Dave, I can hardly hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Speak more into the mic.
Is that better?
Yeah, yeah, much better.
Yeah, I own the empty lot just to the west of the church.
Yep.
And then I have my house on the next lot. To their favor, they've been very good neighbors. I mean, they're, they keep their place clean, keep it mowed and taken care of. But attaching a few things to what Mike and everyone has said, that, that the, our roads are deteriorating. And if you drive out there, the roads deteriorated more at the two entrances to this church. Gives you a little impact of what the, I believe, what happens at now because they don't treat that entrance any more than they do Bonanza Boulevard. Uh, safety-wise, I know you guys are well aware of that in, in the public safety, that you guys are responsible for that, which in turn, with more traffic, it would be worse than what it is presently. Uh, even with the roads being too, I mean, they're still pretty narrow, and there's really not a shoulder to drive on. You get up the roadway, it's on Bonanza, sure you can drive in property. That's where some of the Lord of Life's, uh, parks park when they have an event, and they run out of space in the present one. So you left a park in my frontage area. Um, which I definitely put a lot of money into for the last season anyway. But anyway, I would just like to say that I don't, I don't know if I really oppose the addition. I like people see grow, but as Mike said, when they first built, I was out there, I've been out there thirty-six years. So not too long after the church was built, is when I moved out there, or bailed out there. And, um, owned that lot beside me for thirty-four years. Uh, seen a lot of growth, not only there, but within Skyline Ranches itself. But they did have that good access to Dodge Street when they first built the church. And right now, people will be probably very reluctant, I can't put words in the general public's term, to go west, to go back east, go up Bonanza or around some other way instead of going down 208. You're going to get, we got another church on the northeast corner of 208 and Rawhide, if you're aware of that. Uh, that also has, uh, is growing and having just had addition here about two years ago for, uh, more traffic. So I started looking at some Sunday morning. The distance from Highway Thirty-one up to 208 will probably be full of cars waiting on that light to turn down on Thirty-one, which you get approximately four cars through on a green light is all. And then that'll back up to a 208 probably because they'll still trying to turn. So you get all these, uh, services over with anywhere between eight and twelve. Uh, the backup will be, could be horrendous, just try to leave. Uh, and every church has a lot of events during the evening and during the day. I'm not opposed to that. I mean, like I said, it's a very friendly church, a very nice church. But I am concerned about the traffic, uh, and trying to get the roads repaired, which the city has a tendency to select what they're going to fix. They've done half of Bonanza, but not the other half. And they've done Rawhide, but not 208. So it's, the road's approximately, well, it was SID covered last time, probably thirty, thirty, thirty-two years old for an asphalt roof, or asphalt paving. With that, I won't keep any longer.
Okay.
I appreciate your time. Appreciate your time.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? Go ahead, come forward. Please give us new information that, uh, okay.
Pam Teelin, 125 South 211th Street. If, if we had city blocks, I live maybe two, not even two blocks away from the church. And I never received a letter either, did not know anything about it. I moved out to Skyline Ranches because it is a horse community, and I want to address that part because I ride horse on a regular basis. I use that, use that corral, Skyline Corral, a lot, and I have to go that way by the church to get there. And ever since the daycare has been put in, I have had times where I have to really watch it because they come flying out of there looking. They don't understand horses. They don't understand that. And I have, I'm a four-H leader as well. We have kids riding that have to deal with those people who have no clue about it. And because of that increased traffic on those times for that daycare, it has become more dangerous. I, I fear for some of these kids who are riding horse and myself. My horse is not bombproof. Not, you know, no horse is. And so the safety issue is really what I have in there too, because that's what our community was started for, was for the horse owners. So I want that to be taken into account when you consider this.
Thank you, Pam. Any others?
I'm Suzie Thorn Bond, and I live on Bonanza Boulevard out there, and I did get a letter. I was one of the two residents that went to the meeting. However, my neighbor, who lives on Bonanza Boulevard, uh, to both sides, did not get letters. So it was very scattered on who did. And then I asked Pastor Caleb to let us know when July sixth, when, when the, uh, when they would be on the agenda for the planning board. And I got an email back from him just the other day that said he'd been gone, and they were going to send out, I, we had asked them when we went to the meeting, I'm sorry, to let us know when they would be on this, this meeting, the planning board meeting. And he said he would, but I got an email from him two days ago that just basically said he'd been gone. And they were sending out letters to the neighborhood to let us know that they'd be today for the meeting, but they wouldn't go out until yesterday. So that's not, yeah. And the, the main point that I wanted to make that wasn't made yet is that there are only five families from inside Skyline Ranch Association that belong to the church. The entire rest of those members come from outside, which drives the traffic. And I just wanted to make that point. That's it.
Thank you, Suzie. Any other opponents?
Charles Miskey, 21010 Shiloh Street. I am the property owner right here. And I received, I'd like to take exception to RDG's statement that notifications were sent. I received no notification except from the planning board. And I think with a project that has this significant of an impact in both the, the property itself and to the community, to not receive any notification is quite frankly disrespectful. Um, the other comment I'd like to add is to note that the mayor's office specifically addresses Bonanza Boulevard as being one of the streets that is, um, substandard. That street of all of them is probably in the worst condition of any of the streets that are out there. And I just want to note that they're specifically addressing that street as not meeting the current standards of streets. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I'll be very brief. Paul Randazzo, 20927 Buckskin Trail. Um, they are asking for three waivers in order to move forward with this project. Those rules, the three items that they're asking waivers for are meant to protect me as a homeowner. They're meant to protect you. So I would ask that, on the basis of asking for those waivers, they need to move forward with their project, I would ask that you guys protect me as a homeowner in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Carla Piricello, 285 South Two Sixteenth Circle. Um, I've been a resident of Skyline Ranches for over thirty-five years. It's a beautiful community that was kind of tucked away for a while. Well, now the city has surrounded us, and most, everyone has expressed the legal aspects of this. And I just want to say that we are a very strong community and that we look out for each other. It's kind of the old, old neighborhood idea of living. And, um, people are very emotional about keeping it that way. Uh, we fought the city years ago, uh, not to be annexed. We wanted to keep our little community. We were annexed. We were told that we would be taken care of, uh, that we would have services, that our streets would be taken care of. Um, I just want to express, um, the, the, the emotionalness, the human side of this, uh, in our neighborhood. We have very, quite a few people here today, people that have signed the petition. Um, we, we want to keep our space. Um, I know there is, uh, a lot of things that they need, issues that they need to get waivers on. But green space is huge for our community. Our HOA does not allow privacy fences. We want an open view of the, of, of prairie. We want to keep our neighborhood in, in, in line with our Ne- Nebraska roots, the horses, the prairies, the open space. So, um, that was one thing that wasn't said. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Carla. Any other opponents wishing to speak? I'll just say a reminder, please give us new information. Yeah.
Hi, Leslie Kenobi, 20875 Rawhide Road. And I'm your Gladys Kravitz of the neighborhood, at least on our side. So, um, with the direct mailer, when I got the mailer, I was pretty surprised. Contacted the board, said, hey, did you guys get this? I live eight houses up on Rawhide. I'm on the left-hand side, right across from St. Augustine's. And they had not heard a thing about it. So I took it upon myself to start at the very entrance of the neighborhood and go house to house to see who got it. Two people on our street got it. We are directly impacted by that traffic. And when we finally did get Rawhide done, I called every other day for eight months and talked to a gentleman in the city streets until he was finally very tired of me. And Mayor Stothart came out and looked at our streets for herself. They have since been repaired, but it was done because of the heavy traffic bringing in the food supplies for the school. So we were able to get some concessions. We were able to find a meeting of the minds. But I think that the traffic that's going to come in, not only for the development of this project, but also for the continued use of this project, will really damage our neighborhood. And as was pointed out, the church doesn't pay the taxes to fix it. I was quoted twenty-five thousand dollars pre-COVID to repair my portion of the street in front of my home. I've since been told it would be increased to thirty-five thousand dollars if we were to have to do it today. That's not a burden a homeowner should have to share because there is nobody on one specific side of that street. An additional concern I have is my daughter's an equestrian. Where's that water going to go? The water that's going to come from all the new concrete, all of the new activity, is going to directly impact our riding arena, which is what we're founded on. So I'd really like that taken into consideration. I don't feel it's in the best aspect of continuing our community's existing experience, which is why we're all there. We're equestrian. which is why we're all there. We're equestrians.
Thank you, Leslie. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Joe, we always give the applicant an opportunity to come forward. Did you want to come forward and address any of the issues?
Joe Ktulak with RDG Planning and Design, architect on behalf of Lord of Life Lutheran Church. Thank you all for your, for your comments this afternoon. I do apologize about the letters. We used current GIS data to pull names and addresses along the routes described along 208th and Bonanza and the entrance at Rawhide to get what was, what we thought were accurate addresses, names for those letters. A few other comments that, that I can answer related to some of the water management questions that were done. So as part of our proposal, we submitted a PCSMP which increased the size of one of the current existing PCSMPs, stormwater detention areas, and added a new one here to the north to handle any water that would be coming off that lot and heading towards the, the horse trail. And then a new one here on the northeast, again, the, the low area of the site to handle that increased stormwater from the additions, not only parking, but building as well. Related to the height of the building with a gable roof, which is what is currently existing on the church and what we continue architecturally to, to match the space. A gable roof, the height of that roof is taken from the midpoint of the gable. Our midpoints range between thirty-two and thirty-three feet for the midpoint of the high roofs. And those areas taken from the grade adjacent to them. So we, we are within the thirty-five foot. In terms of sanitary sewer, the church itself is on a septic system. So that would be part of the engineering of the, the process of moving forward with whatever may be constructed would be a full sanitary sewer designed by an engineer that does sanitary sewer design. We are not at that current phase of the project. In terms of capacity, correct, the, the goal would be to expand to a space that could potentially seat four hundred individuals for worship. Currently, they do seat a hundred and fifty. We don't anticipate that growth to happen overnight. We anticipate that growth to be slow and gradual. And the parking provided onsite would allow for that hundred and forty capacity. In addition to the capacity of the childcare facility, so if there was a large funeral that were to occur, you know, on a weekday, there is capacity to handle not only the needs of the worship space, but also the needs of the childcare facility. Presently, the, the church is only licensed to have sixty-eight or sixty-four children as part of what the state allows them to have in their facility. The goal is to not increase what the, what the church is licensed for, but simply provide better spaces. Currently, the, the spaces are inadequate architecturally and from a, from a safety standpoint for the needs of today. So while the classrooms may be bigger from a code standpoint, allowing more capacity, the goal would just be to provide simply better spaces for the children, not necessarily increase to the hundred and twelve. The code would say that that is what we need to provide life safety for. In terms of traffic study, I, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm an architect, so I can't speak to those comments. Thank you.
A question for you or maybe one of the pastors. Just a real quick question. How long has that church been on that site?
The church has been on the site, you'll be celebrating nineteen eighty-two it was built. They'll be celebrating eighty-two.
Eighty-two. Okay. And Skyline Ranches is, how old is the development, south? Do you know Greg?
Oh, it started in the late sixties, seventy-one.
Seventy-one. Thank you. Yes, the, the daycare was part of the twenty fifteen, seventeen addition.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments?
I'll just make comments. Couple of comments here. First of all, thanks for everybody coming out and testifying. It's always valuable to get public testimony regardless of what the outcome is. I appreciate, I really do appreciate the passion that you have and the uniqueness of Skyline Ranches. I remember it too. I've been in Omaha all my life and I, I get it. I understand it. When I grew up, it was way out there, right? It's way out there. Now it's in the city and I get that. I think you have a legitimate gripe with regards to the streets, but your gripe is with the city of Omaha. It's not with the church. And I can, I can think of several instances where there are churches located and schools, which also have a lot of traffic within a neighborhood, all across the city, all across the city. So I appreciate what your concerns are. But I also think the church is doing good. Someone testified that it's been a good neighbor. And I don't want to begrudge them the notion of increasing their membership if they have the capacity to do so and the, and the willingness to do so. So, you know, I do appreciate it. I really do. But the problems are, I think the problems seem to be more with the streets and the traffic that will come with the increased capacity, hopefully. But I think your complaint is with the city. And I said, I think that that complaint is a legitimate complaint. I can't do anything about it on the planning board, right? But I think you do have a legitimate complaint. So I'll just say, that's my editorial comment with regards to, to the testimony today. And I do appreciate you all coming out today because we do listen. We really do. So thank you.
I do have a question and maybe Greg, you can answer this, but if the streets were to be improved, would the church have to contribute at all? Would they have any contribution whatsoever?
That's a good question. You mean with the substandard street policy and the frontage?
Let's bring Ryan Haas down from Public Works. Brian's not an expert on the street improvement district, but he did have conversations this past week. So it's a good starting point.
Ryan Haas for the Public Works Department. Part of the staff recommendation is to require that the, the applicant waive the right to protest the creation of a future improvement district for either sidewalks or streets. So in the event that the neighborhood otherwise pursues that improvement district, this, this church would be required to participate at that time in the cost for those improvements.
And so Mike, yeah, the reason I ask the question is just that they're increasing capacity of the church and then the daycare also, I think, drives a lot of trips. And if they're not contributing to the repairs of the streets, I take a little issue, even though that's maybe outside of the scope of this board, I, I do think, I understand the concern there if they're not gonna contribute. But they're driving so much traffic. I think that's an issue. Just wanted to have that stated on the record.
Thank you. And I'll just add, I mean, it's a, it's a little challenging because there's not a street improvement district that's set up. So, you know, it's speculative. Obviously, we're trying to account for the, for the larger, you know, addition. But in the case, if one was set up, you know, we're trying to proactively account for the church being a participant.
Eric, if there was a street improvement district set up, each property would be assessed as part of their taxes? And there'd be an additional assessment for that?
My understanding is it can be incorporated into their property taxes over a number of years. It's not always paid one upfront payment. You know, this is just me looking secondhand when these come through to city council and just my, my very general knowledge on, on the circumstance. But it's, it's usually spread out over a number of years. We have a contact in the Public Works Department that we can, you know, definitely get that information to the residents. But yes, generally, each property, you know, there's a certain number of properties that need to sign on to, you know, to, to, to apply for this to be approved by the city council. And if that's the case, then there's an assessment for a number of years to pay their share.
Here's one of the things that's irritating about that for me is that I, I bet if you polled most of the people here that came out from Skyline, the $200 million street bond issue, most of us voted for that. So we have already voted for street, you know, streets to be repaired. And then we're gonna be a set, and our, our money, our tax money goes to repair everybody else's streets. We get left with substandard streets or what is termed to be substandard streets. We have an argument with that also. But it doesn't seem fair that we are spending tax dollars on street repairs and then we have to pay additional tax dollars to repair our own streets if, 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 you know, an improvement district was formed. As this board knows, I've been upset for years about the substandard street policy. And you with Lord of Life Church, I know you don't think that ties in, but it, it all ties together. And 208th Street, when you came off a Dodge, fine, you know, short entrance you were in. Now we've got our streets that are 208th Street, you can hardly walk on it, let alone drive a car on it. And Mike is, I, 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 thank you, Mike, for your stand on the streets, but Mike, you're partly right and partly wrong. The traffic that you're going to increase and the safety of the children that, you know, ride horses come in and out of there. I've almost gotten hit on a Sunday morning by people going to church. And I'm, I'm not against churchgoers. I like church. But it does, everything ties into the traffic and into the streets. Every year I give, when it comes to the mayor's annexation, I, I, package, I vote against it. And I vote against it because I'm not gonna take on any more street miles until we get this substandard street policy taken care of. It's a poor policy. It's a lousy policy. It pits neighborhoods against neighborhoods. On this board, we've always said, streets belong to the citizens of Omaha. People get upset. They don't want another neighborhood tying into their neighborhood. And we say, hey, that's connectivity. That's how you build a city. You don't exclude people from your neighborhood. Well, now we're told, you gotta, we're, we're being excluded from having repairs done to our work or resurfacing done to our work, to our streets. It's a bad policy. It's not right. Because of that reason, I'm not in support of this. Also, the other reason is, is the traffic. And the other reason, Joe, is that not enough people were notified. It was poor communication, I think, on your part. Not saying you did anything wrong. You may have thought you done, you did everything right. But it was poor communication. Not enough people heard about it. I never got a letter. And for those reasons, I'm not in favor of this. I would rather vote for a layover than I would for approval or turning it down right now. I'd rather vote for a layover. I don't think the, the board's got the mindset to maybe vote this down. But I, I, I would, I would vote at least for a layover or to deny the process. Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So what, what would a layover accomplish in your mind?
Well, there, there hasn't been proper public notification. The church hasn't sat down with enough homeowners in Skyline Ranches to talk about what they want to do. That's, we always, as a board, we hold that standard to all the applicants that come in here.
Yeah.
And I don't think that, that standard has been met in this case.
Yeah. And, and I, and I agree with that. I do agree with that. But however, word did circulate and then we could tell by the testimony here today, plus the, the petition that was presented as, as well here. So I don't know that a layover would accomplish much of anything other than having a, a meeting to duke it out, basically.
It might help work out some.
It, it might. But again, I mean, you're absolutely right.
Change some things.
And I, and you're absolutely right with regards to the policy. I think it's bad public policy. With regards to the substandard street policy, I do. I, I don't know where it came from or how it originated or the genesis of that was, but it just doesn't, it makes common sense to me. So I, I get that part of it. I just don't know that a layover would accomplish much of anything. I just, that's, that's my opinion.
I think this is the first time you and I have disagreed on something.
But it's, you know, but it's okay. That's all right. You know.
Yeah, it is. It is.
Well, I'd like an opportunity to say a few things, just to clear up, clear up a few, a few comments that were said. So one of the comments talked about needing a special use permit compared to a conditional use permit in the R1 district. Yes, in operation by itself. However, in section fifty-five, seven, sixty-four D two, which is daycare services general, let me just read this, daycare services general, which is, I think it's more than ten individuals, is allowed in the DR through R6 districts as an accessory use to and on the same site as administrative services, college and university facilities, community recreation, emergency residential care services, hospital services, military installations, primary education facilities, religious assembly and secondary education facilities, provided that the site can comply with off-street parking requirements. So I know that was a lot to be said, but basically with a religious assembly or a church, which needs the conditional use permit, a daycare accessory to that primary use just fits under with that conditional use permit. So a separate special use permit is not needed in this situation. Also, for the definition of height, Joe did summarize. I don't need to read the definition, but yes, height is measured to the, the midpoint of a peaked roof. As far as impervious coverage and stormwater, there are stormwater regulations in place, but that Public Works requires. Of course, there's been some talk about that already today. So they review and any new pavement, any new building additions has to require with, or has to comply with those requirements. Traffic, we, we do have Ryan Haas here who is traffic engineer. The level of increase or building addition does not get to the scope of requiring a, a traffic study is, is my understanding. But Ryan can get into those details more. And I don't want to get into the, you know, the $200 million for street repair or the policy of, you know, street improvement districts. But I do just want to say, this is why staff is so diligent when projects come through with plating that we require streets to be built to a standard that, that it should be. And I know this is unique. I know this is formerly City of Elkhorn. And, you know, I'm not here to, to, to discuss that. But I just want to point out, that's why when we sit here and plat over and over and, you know, new neighborhoods, they're, you know, the, the cost of those residential lots, putting in the street infrastructure and the sewer infrastructure is, you know, a part of what goes into the cost of that lot. So I just wanted to point that out. I will read the recommendation from the city.
Comment.
Sure.
Just, I said this upstairs and I'm, said it a few other times, but our engineers say that our streets were built according to the standards at the time. So that's where we have the biggest issue is, is being labeled substandard streets. Can I say one more thing here? Joe, you're hearing, you got a petition here of a hundred people. You're hearing a lot of people that took their time to come down here in opposition to this. You're in the neighborhood. In the light of being a good neighbor, maybe we should reconsider this, you know, going forward or at, at the least a layover. Joe, I'll call you back up. Come on back up. I closed the public hearing, but with all that said, and you're a church and you, here you are, you're looking for good neighbors and you've seen what your neighbors have been saying.
Perhaps one of the, oh, sorry. Joe Ktulak with RDG Planning and Design, architect. Our offices are thirteen oh two Howard Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight, one oh two. Perhaps that's a better question for, for one of the pastors to, to answer.
Is there a pastor? I can call you up if there's a pastor that.
Yeah, I'm David Lynn Kugel, home address seven four, two, three, North Hundred Seventy-Fifth Circle. I'm the senior pastor with Pastor Caleb Cruz, who is my associate pastor. We'd certainly be willing to hold a meeting, as Joe had said earlier. As Joe had said earlier, we use the Excel spreadsheet that they gave us to address the envelopes to the neighbors. I know we had some that came back undeliverable as addressed, but, you know, we would certainly, and we did. Yeah, as the property owner, we received the notice of the hearing today that we were on the agenda. So last Friday, we did send out another letter to the same address that we had previously to let people know that we were on the agenda today. But, you know, we haven't had a chance to discuss with the neighbors, other than the two people who showed up to our first meeting back in April. So we would certainly be willing to listen and talk to any concerns that they have. Again, we just haven't had a chance to really hear much input from the neighbors before this.
So a layover would be okay for you?
Yeah, we could set up a chance for the meeting. I know Pastor Caleb Cruz and I had also offered, you know, if it would work, that we were willing to go to the homeowners' association meeting to talk to them there and, you know, you know, address the board or any of the homeowners that would come to their meeting that way as well. Either way, coming to, holding another meeting at the church for them to come to or going to their homeowners' association meeting.
Thank you, David. All right, I'm done.
Yeah, so I, um, I'll, I'll just say, staff recommend approval of the major amendment subject to the eight conditions. That being said, of course, acceptable to a layover. I do wanna throw it out there, I don't know if this matters. You don't need the number of parking stalls that is proposed with the site plan. You could eliminate some of those stalls, create some more green space, so that's an option. I don't know if that's a priority. I, I don't know if that does much. I know most of the concerns with the traffic and the, and the situation of the streets, but, um, you know, there's something there that maybe could be discussed.
Okay. Did you wanna read your?
Should we touch base after or do?
I just wanted a clarification on your count.
Well, let's touch base after, yep.
Okay, I guess I missed it when you read your recommendations. Okay. Anyway, Dave, did you wanna say something?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanna add to both your comments, all of your comments regarding the substandard streets because the, the city has to recognize, they want our land, uh, to grow the city and for good reasons. They also take the revenue that is derived from it. They also understand when they take that, what the conditions of those streets are. Those streets were put in, they were not City of Elkhorn. Those were Douglas County standard streets at the time that that, uh, was developed. Um, Elkhorn ultimately annexed that area and then ultimately Omaha did. So Elkhorn did their part as, as you mentioned during, during our pre-meeting in maintaining those streets during that time. Now Omaha has a different policy and that needs to be addressed, I think. I don't think it's fair to, to, uh, fair distribution of, of our funds once we are annexed and then we're excluded from some of the services that we're paying for. And so that's what I would like to, just to comment, that, that there's enough of us on this board that are involved in that and all of you out there that are, that have been testifying have, the biggest concern you have is those streets. And, and so now those need to be addressed somehow. And, and I don't know what the next path is up to the, the city to do that. I know it's been tried before, uh, but it, we aren't the only area in town. There's all kinds of areas all over the town on, on the fringes of the community that are being annexed, uh, to, to grow the city. And that is a, an integral part of what it takes to be a part of a city. So with that, do you want a motion?
I'll take a motion.
A motion to lay this over for one month, uh, to clarify some of the issues that are on the table.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Rollbacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pay?
I don't know, no.
Yes.
Sodolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Prove 70.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on, agenda item number 27. Okay, I gotta find my. Here I go. Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
Questions, Lynn Kugel? I just wanna thank you all for your flexibility on this and agreeing to hold it over, so.
Thank you. Okay, agenda item number 27. This was on consent for approval. It was taken off. It's case C7-22-173, applicant St. Philip Neri Blessed Sacrament Catholic Parish. Request: Approval of a major amendment to the presumed conditional use permit pursuant to section 55, 883Q to allow religious assembly in the R3 district. Location: 8200 North 30th Street is the applicant here.
Good afternoon, Board. My name is Joe Proctor, 8446 Madison Street, Omaha, 68127. Um, here on behalf of St. Philip Neri Blessed Sacrament. Just here to answer any questions that may, you may have.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Name and address, please.
Good afternoon. I, my name is Christina Mitchell and, uh, my address is 3017 Mormon Street. I'm in Historic Florence of Nebraska. The LED marquee that the church is requesting they put in place of their current sign. Their look, their current sign is located right here. My residence is right here.
Okay, there we are.
Right here.
All right, gotcha.
So this is my house. So my bedrooms are all up on the second floor. I can see over the entire church. So there are no signs, there are no LED marquee signs located in any businesses located in the Florence Historical or Menelusa area. There are also three churches that are located within 300 feet of St. Philip Neri Blessed Sacrament Church, as well as their school located in Florence Historic, excuse me, Historic Florence. Not one of these churches have a digital marquee, however, they may look into doing the same thing if this is granted. There are no businesses in Florence or Menelusa that have the digital marquee, including the New Dino Storage and relatively New Hy-Vee, both located in the heart of historic downtown Florence. There are no businesses located about a, within one mile south that have a digital marquee, including the newly added Romantics on 30th Street. These two North Omaha neighborhoods have been plagued with a bad reputation in the last few years and the neighborhoods are just starting to attract good working-class families back into these beautiful historic homes. This is not the direction these communities want to go. These communities do not want the fast-paced and flashy lights of the big city, but our jobs require us to live in the city. For examples, these communities are starting studies on how to remove the fast-paced traffic off of 30th Street to make the neighborhood safer and quieter. This is just the latest example of how St. Philip Neri has been bad stewards of this historic neighborhood. St. Philip Neri Blessed Sacrament Church has a parking lot, which is located directly behind my residence, which is also loaded with a bunch of bright lights to illuminate the empty lot that shine into the surrounding houses, including our house, at night, that we have to pull darkening shades and curtains closed. And the neighborhood doesn't need the added light pollution the LED marquee would provide. This church does have four industrial-sized air conditioners on their property, which contributes to much of the noise pollution in the area. The church also placed two of their four industrial air conditioners on the property line between the church and our residence to where we hear them running at all hours. The church has placed new diagonal parking in the city right-of-way on the north side of the church on Mormon Street. Their contractor used our driveway without permission for their heavy equipment, such as skid steers during their construction, correcting two panels of our driveway, and the church has not made good on, on their promises to us to fix the ruined concrete. This added digital parking contributed to significant additional traffic to this low-traffic-density street, which has also added new traffic hazards. During times of heavy use of digi, uh, excuse me, diagonal parking traffic, the, the traffic can actually stack up on the 30th Street, waiting to turn the corner onto Mormon Street. Also, with parallel parking still allowed on one side of the street, which would be directly in front of my residence on Mormon, it is hard for traffic to see kids passing between cars that are running into Florence Park. Too many activities are happening on this low-traffic-density street within one block. For examples, vehicles are driving westbound and eastbound. Vehicles are pulling into diagonal and parallel parking spots, as well as backing out of and pulling out of the same type of spots. Vehicles are stacking up on Mormon Street and 30th Street, waiting for traffic congestion to clear. Also, there are two driveways that exit into this area, which would be the two driveways that belong to me. Yes, absolutely. Right.
So the sign that you're, you're, you're against.
Yes.
Is, is due to, to brightness. Is that, is that where we're at on the sign?
Yes, because based on their origin, their current sign that they have, let me show you that. This is their current sign.
Okay.
That they currently have. And they're looking at changing it to a bright LED marquee.
Okay.
The only notification that I received was a letter from the city planning board stating.
Can you show me again where that sign is compared to where your, where your home is, please?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's, that's.
That's, that's where their sign is currently. And this is my, this is my residence.
Okay.
I'm the only house that's on the entire block.
Okay.
And it's, my house is actually a historical landmark as well.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely. I'm, I don't, I, we've never received any notification from the church pertaining to making any changes to the sign. I don't, I would almost bet all the neighbors that are around the entire church has not received any notification. The only notification that we received was the notification from the city planning board.
Okay.
Pertaining to the meeting for today.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sydney, did you have a question?
I was just wondering if it was a requirement of the church to notify neighbors of a, a change in their sign.
So, no, there's not a specific code requirement that the applicant notify anyone. State law requires, um, the planning department to do notifications, which, which was done. Obviously, we've talked about it a couple times already. That's typically what we expect from applicants, to reach out to neighbors to, you know, to get ahead. Anytime we meet with potential applicants, that's what we tell them.
Even with sign changes in signs?
Yep, ba- basically, any, anything that comes to the board, you know, just to, to reach out and be good neighbors.
Got you. And I can actually answer that question. When they did the parking lot in front of the church, we received notification directly from the church. Anytime that they do their activities on 31st between Mormon and Greve, and it's during their summer activities for the school, we receive notification to let us know that they're gonna block off 31st from Greve to Mormon, so that way they can have their activities. And they would, we get invited to their activities for free dinner, soda. We do get invited to those activities, but this was the first time we never received any notification from the church.
Thank you.
Christina, I apologize. I was having a hard time hearing everything you, you said.
Yes, sir.
At any time, did you mention other neighbors? Have you heard from other neighbors or anybody that's upset with this? Or to your knowledge, are you the only neighbor that's upset with this?
Myself and my husband at this time. We have not heard from any of the other neighbors around the area.
Okay.
But I do know that the residents that lives on this corner of 30th and Greve, they do have little children. So I would imagine any of those residents that, where that sign is just going to be very obtrusive.
And your concern is into your, it shines, gonna shine.
It's gonna shine into my master bedroom. Because I, I, cause I can see directly over the top of the church from my master bedroom.
All right, okay.
I'm sorry, what?
A little bit over four feet high, like it is now.
I believe that is what their documentation is stating.
That's what the, that's what our packet here is, four feet, little 15 inches, basically, to the top.
That's correct.
And your concern is that it's gonna be LED and much brighter than the light that's there now?
Right, because the current sign that they have there now is more pertaining to the historic of the Florence area. It's, that's everything that's down there. Everything that has been built up, down in that area is all part of Historic Florence. The residence that we own is the old Curl House. When they built that house back in 1905, they owned the entire block. So St. Philip Neri was not there until many, many years ago.
So if it is a historic building or has some sort of historic designation, then, um, I would assume there's regulations as to what kind of signage they can have. And is this breaking a rule or not, I guess, or is it not a historic? I'm not aware of the church having any historical status. As, as she mentioned, her property is local landmark, which, which is the case. But I'm not aware that there's any historical status. It, it's definitely not a local landmark that would show up on the zoning. One of my managers is, um, the historic preservation manager. So I would have expected comments that we have to compile in the report. If there were any concerns on that front, uh, that would have been brought up in our, during our review. And, um, our director just checked on the GIS and no, there's not a, a district that it's part of, so. And I'll, I'll make my other comments after.
Yep, okay, are you, are you done, Christina?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, close public hearing. Additional comments, questions from the board? Oh, I'm sorry. Come on up, Joe. If you wanted to.
Again, Joe Proctor, 8446 Madison Street, Omaha, 68127.
And Christina had talked about a lot of issues, but let's, just your issues with the sign, her issues with the sign.
Okay, the sign itself, it currently, it is just a fluorescent light tube lit sign with what's called a manual reader board, meaning someone has to physically change the letters. And it's simply that it, it advertises, quote unquote, the activities of the church. There's no kind of commercial advertisement whatsoever. The church has decided to modernize, quote unquote, and, you know, kind of wanting to advertise the activities of the church in a, in what they've also said is a much safer way. I don't know if, if you're familiar with those types of signs. It has a heavy, a heavy plexiglass door on either side of the sign and an older lady has to climb underneath that, when that sign panel, the clear panel, and get down on the ground and change out those letters. With the type of sign that is being proposed, it, it is an LED, what's called electronic message board. Uh, they've become somewhat popular in recent years and we've also noticed a lot of ridiculous animation that's not being planned whatsoever. The church is not having anything to do with that. Uh, the church is going to follow the specifications as far as the city has kind of laid out before and planning department as well. And that the brightness levels at night will automatically dim at a specific time. This type of sign can be programmed that way. It will automatically dim to roughly 10% of the daytime brightness. So the, the brightness shining across that far of a distance is gonna be minimal at best. And it will also not, as I said, not show any kind of animation. Messages will be strictly church activities and there will be 10-second intervals, minimum, between messages on the church. And it's strictly, as I said, just to advertise activities of the church, such as worship times, any kind of special events the church may have going on, anything like that. But the sign itself is fairly, it's somewhat old, early 80s. And it was built in that spot and at the time, North 30th Street was still a state. that spot, and at the time, North Thirtieth Street was still a state highway. However, the, the setback lines were grad, you know, greatly changed at one point. So that created the sign literally being on state property in the right-of-way. So in order to make that sign legal, we had to reach out to the state for an encroachment permit, which we were granted. We reissued an encroachment permit, as the sign literally straddles the property line, so there's four feet onto right-of-way, and the state did issue that encroachment permit to be permanent. As far as that goes, the sign itself, the structure, is not being changed or modified. If it was, it would have to be moved way back too close to the church, which would then affect distance away from the building that's also required. The sign itself is literally underneath a tree. So there's a tree that kind of blocks that sign from behind, so to speak, and the building itself will kind of come into play and block that sign from behind. As I mentioned also, with the encroachment permit, the church didn't want to, well, kind of spend the money to move that sign, as it would be way back off of the right-of-way and up next to the building, thus not as much visibility. With the church being where it's at, it's been there since roughly nineteen fifty-five, I believe, was when it was built. And of course, as we know, ordinances and whatnot have changed several times, minimum, you know, so it's, the church is just trying to kind of modernize a little bit. It, it's not planning to be obtrusive. When there's, the subject of historically, you know, historical area, I kind of look at Hy-Vee not being real historical to be, to me, so I'm not sure that that can...
Joe did.
Really be a solid argument.
Don't get mad at me.
No, 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 no.
This sign is for people driving on Thirtieth Street...
That's correct.
Going north and south.
Correct.
Her property is to the northwest of you.
Correct.
All right, question here, I don't know, I haven't been to the site, don't know if it'd work or not. Can you put in additional planting in that wouldn't block people coming south on Thirtieth Street, but would block her view of the sign?
Let me drop this in real quick. That's the sign.
Yep.
During times like now, summertime, this, these two trees are full of leaves, so obviously there's, it's not going to be very visible from behind. The church building here, this is the rectory, sanctuary is over here. Her home lies in this back corner.
Yeah.
So I, I, I don't know if so much that brightness is going to shine past this building. Perhaps it will, we haven't done that kind of study. We haven't done that, you know, checking into that. Obviously, we can't with not being able to build the sign yet.
You're saying that, that in the evening it drops to ten percent of the brightness during the daytime?
Yes, that, that's common for signs like this to be, to drop the brightness, to dim it way down at nighttime. Especially with church activities, when the church is closed, we don't, they don't really need to advertise that much.
I guess the way I'm looking at it is, and in this picture, I, I don't see Christina's house in that picture.
Correct, it would be much like where this tall...
Yeah, where that tall cheese pack there.
Evergreen would be just to the west of that.
I don't think the line of sight would have... Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Joe.
Yep, thank you.
Any additional comments, questions before we hear from Eric?
Eric? Okay, so, yeah, there are four waivers that are needed, which is not uncommon when you have a civic use in a residential zoning. We are currently looking at our signage code and expect changes, but we often support certain waivers when they're dealing with churches and schools regarding signage. So sign budget, sign area, they're just very small increases over the allowed regulation. And then, of course, the electronic component, but based on its location on Thirtieth Street being a major arterial, we are supportive. And then the setback due to, as Joe had explained, with the encroachment permit and them not moving the base of the sign, we are supportive. So we do support those waivers, which would have to go to the zoning board of appeals, along with the criteria that Joe had mentioned of section fifty-five dash eight fifty-four. These requirements or regulations were put in place when electronic off-premise billboards, that code was adopted twelve or thirteen years ago. So we have found those to be effective in being able to manage maximum brightness, automatic dimming, brightness differential, you know, ten-second minimum image duration time, along with other features. So that is part of our recommendation. So staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit, subject to the ten conditions in the report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I motion for approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit to allow religious assembly...
Assembly, subject to the ten conditions in the recommendation report.
We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Solongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved seven zero.
That was it, wasn't it? Okay. Just a comment before I ask for a, a motion on the minutes. Apologize for my, in my neighborhood, I may have gotten, brought some of my personal thoughts into this.
You think?
Yeah. A little bit passionate about it, so I apologize. And Mike, I... That was approved on consent. Early, early on, in the first ten minutes of the meeting, we go through the consent agenda, and that was on consent for approval, and it was approved and voted on and approved, and no further action is going to be taken after about the first ten minutes of the meeting. Yes. You, you needed to be here right at the beginning of the meeting, and when I read the consent, each agenda item on consent, I asked if anyone wants to remove it from consent. And if you weren't here... Oh, okay. Yeah, you can still go. Yeah. And you can talk to Eric right here. Okay, sorry, sir, for, you sat here for a long time, so. Anyways, do we have a motion on last month's minutes for pre-meeting and public hearing? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, will you please record the vote?
Franklin? Moore? Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Solongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved six zero.
Do we have a, a motion for adjournment? We have a motion and a second. Debbie, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Solongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.